Good evening, welcome to Town Council meeting on Monday, October 5th, 2020, 7:00 PM. This meeting is being conducted via remote participation. And calling this meeting to order pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order, suspended certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 38, section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the town council is being conducted via remote participation only. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in this order. Reminder that persons who would like to view this meeting on progress may do so by watching Southbridge Cable Access Channel 192 or by the remote information noted below. We will post a record of this meeting on Town's website at www.ci.southbridge.us as soon as we're able to. A reminder that a roll call vote is required for all votes taken under this order.
Mr. Chair, Council Adam, he sent a message, he cannot hear, he restarted his computer.
Okay, thank you. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Counselor.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, Counselor Catrona.
Present.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor Dow.
Present.
Counselor Joe Van.
Present.
Counselor Lazo.
Excused.
Counselor Marquetti.
Present.
Counselor Ryan.
Present.
And Counselor Steves.
Present.
Thank you. Considering except the Town Council meeting minutes of Monday, September 28th, 2020, do I have a motion? So I have a motion by Counsel Sees, seconded by Counsel Ryan. Any errors, corrections, or admissions? Counselor Steve.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you. A couple, just the vote counts for items 14, 15, and 16 should be 7-1-0. It's listed as 7-0-1. Does Counselor Catrona vote against all three of them? And that's, that's all I had.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Actually, on the same line of Counselor Steve's agenda item number three, it should be 7-0-1, not 7-1-0.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, Counsel, my Counsel Dow abstained. Okay, any others? See none, roll call.
Counselor Catrona.
Yes.
Counselor Daniel.
Yes.
Counselor Dow.
Yes.
Counselor Joe Van.
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Yeah.
Counselor Steves.
Yes.
And Counselor Adams is back on.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Thank you. Subcommittee reports, General Government Counsel Steves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a meeting on September 29th that includes item numbers, item numbers 12, 14, and 19 on tonight's agenda. But we also discussed, you also talked about the upcoming wetlands bylaw, which we had originally last, we had last visited in December, and we had some discussion of that and send it back to Eric for some more information. He did send it to us. I hope everybody got it. And so I will be putting it back on the agenda for the next gen government meeting, which hasn't yet been scheduled. We also talked about the council confirmation process for appointments to boards and commissions, and specifically to, I'm getting some feedback here, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if it's mine or where from, but.
Yeah, no, I'm gonna, I'm gonna mute one. Hold on. Go ahead, Counsel.
And so as I was saying, we also started to discuss in the process for council confirmation for appointments to boards and commissions and to count for council appointments to various regional boards and things like that. So I will come back with a proposal for what a policy might be for the council's rules and regs for the next council meeting, for the next general government meeting. And we do not have another meeting scheduled.
Thank you, Counsel Marquetti.
Thank you. We haven't had any meetings for the last couple of weeks, but we do have a meeting scheduled for Thursday, October 15th at 6:00 PM. This will be a remote meeting, and so far, the only agenda item that I'm aware of is the Main Street Intersection Improvement Project. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Education and Human Services, Counsel Catrona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nothing to report this evening, no meeting scheduled.
Thank you, Counsel. Planning and Development, Counsel Adams.
Mr. Chair, through you, we had a meeting on September 29th, 6:00 PM remotely. Agenda items number 15 through 18 on tonight's agenda, and I do not have one scheduled as of yet, but I just got an email today that we may have one next week or two. That's all I have for you.
Thank you, Counsel. Protection, protection of persons and property. Counsel allows us not here this evening. So moving on, curbside advisory, Counsel Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Nothing new to report. I have a meeting with the Town Manager tomorrow morning, and then I'll be getting with you on a, on a date for presentation. That's all.
Thank you, Counsel. COVID-19 Public Health and Safety briefing. I don't believe Andy's on. I know a message came, so evidently he didn't have anything else to add. Is that correct, Mr. Manager?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. I, I did have a brief conversation and exchange communications with Mr. Pelletier. We have had a couple of new cases, but we're still in the yellow category with regard to the color coding at the state level. So nothing new at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Counsel Marquetti.
Residents have been asking what's going on with Halloween, so if Andy could address that at some point, we would appreciate it. Thank you.
Duly noted. I will follow up.
Thank you. Chairman's announcement, I have none this evening. Town Manager? Town Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did attend both of the subcommittee meetings last week for planning and development as well as general government. I have no real announcements. Again, continuing to meet with the various department heads. I did mention last week that we had identified a candidate for the operations manager at DPW. That notifications, my understanding, has since been made, and that individual is Philip Harding, who was an internal candidate. And I will say, we did have four finalists. I sat down with Kim Farren, Heather Blakely, and we interviewed the four. They were all good candidates. However, Mr. Harding demonstrated good knowledge, he had good management skills, he's a veteran, and so he was the one that we selected. I would also just mention, it did come up the prior meeting, and I know Heather Blakely will be on later. We are continuing to look at the HVAC needs at both the Town Hall and the RMB. Heather had some people in today looking at it. And we're also dealing with a recent announcement by FEMA that is changing the eligibility requirements for certain COVID reimbursements. So we're, we're just looking at how that will impact the town. It's not going to affect reimbursements for first responders in certain emergency situations, but it may come into play with some of the things that we're trying to get the 75% reimbursement as we go forward. So we're keeping that all in mind as we're trying to make some of these changes. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Presentations. Tonight, we have a presentation from our finest director, Karen Hinoise, which is a review of the FY 2019 Town of Southbridge Audit with our auditors, Roselli, Clark, and Associates. So I will turn this over to, unless the Town Manager, Ms. Town Manager, do you have any introduction you wanted to make before I turn it over to Karen?
No, I would defer to Ms. Hinoise.
Thank you. Karen?
Yes, good evening, everyone. This evening, I have Tony Roselli and Chad Clark from Roselli, Clark and Associates. We're going to give a, a review and presentation on the FY 2019 audit. So we'll turn it over to them.
Oh, good evening, everyone. I'm Tony Roselli, and I am the Roselli partner, Roselli Clark. Chad Clark is also on the call. He was the field engagement partner. I'm the concurring partner. So I'll be doing most of the presentation tonight, and Chad will, will fill in on some of the areas that he worked on in areas that I might unable to answer a question, or if there needs to be some further clarification. First of all, I just want to thank the entire finance offices, treasurer, the finance director, the accounting office, for that, for their assistance in getting through the audit. An audit is quite challenging. There's a lot of things that need to be done. It needs to be choreographed, planned, and any hiccups can cause delays. So it went fairly, fairly well this year. I was very pleased with the process. I was very pleased with the efforts of the team that helped us. And this is our second stint as the auditors for the Southbridge. Southbridge typically changes CPA firms every six years. So we did a stint from like 2009 to 2015, then another firm did a stint, and now we're back. So I'm happy to be back and happy to report a review of the audit. So without any further ado, we can get into that. So tonight, I'm going to go through the financial statements at a very high level. The financial statements is like a 60-page document. We're not going to go through the whole thing. We could be here for the next five hours if we that. At a very high level, just pointing out the highlights, the trends, and then, and then we can get into the management letter, which is basically observations, things that come up as we're going through our audit procedures. So, so I'll point everyone to the financial statements, which is the bigger of the, of the documents that we sent out. And we can start like on, we'll start on page three. So if everyone has that in front of them, or if you just want to listen, that's fine. I believe these were sent out as in the packet. So, so first of all, the town, there's two sets, within the financial statements, there's two sets of numbers. There's the numbers that the AICPA, which is the Accounting Regulatory Board that oversees us, they have all kinds of rules and all kinds of things that need to go into one set of statements, just accruals and different things that are not really part of the economic part of a town. A town is really a cash basis entity. Cash in, cash out. That's basically what a town is. But the AICPA issued a separate set of financials that said, hey, let, what would the town look like if it was a commercial entity? We're going to stay away from that because the DOR doesn't look at that, the, the rating agents don't look at that, and it doesn't really make a lot of sense unless you've got a master's degree in accounting or CPA or, so we won't get, we don't get into the details of that, but just to let you know, there is that, those statements. The second statements are the ones that DOR uses and your, and your rating agents use. And on page three, if you go down to the third bullet, we talk about what's called unassigned funded balance. Unassigned fund balance is in the general fund. So the town has a bunch of funds. It's got a general fund, which is the operating fund. It's got the special revenue funds, which are all your side funds restricted with specific purposes. It's got your trust funds and so on and so forth. The general fund is the main fund. That's where all your revenues, your taxes, your excises, your, your permits, your penalties, your fees, that's all comes into the general fund. And then from that, you're authorized to spend, to spend money from that through your town council meeting. You authorize the spending of those receipts. If you have more receipts than expenses at the end of the year, you have what's called a surplus. And a surplus is good news. It means you've managed your budget effectively. You've, you've done a good job of estimating your revenues, and you're in a good position if you have a surplus. The bigger the surplus, the better. The Standard and Poor puts out that if you have a 15% surplus, accumulated surplus, year to year, that you're in a good place. Hello? Oh, got some background noise. You're in a tier-one community if you have 15% of your unassigned fund balance or your reserves, 15% of expenses. So the town's unassigned fund balance was $5.7 million at the end of June 30th, 2019. How did that represent in terms of the percentage of expenses? It's about 9.9%, so just under 10%. So what, you're what's called in the tier-two category, which is 8% to 14%. And you got a double A minus bond rating. Part of the reason you got the double A minus bond rating is because of the level of reserves that you have and that you've accumulated from year to year. Again, the general fund has accumulated 5.7 million. It's 9.9% of general fund expenditures. The total general fund equity is 7.9 million. That's about 13.6%. That includes other things like encumbrances and, and different reserves that you have to maintain in your general fund. So that, that's, that's good news. The town's in good shape. It increased its reserves by about $700,000, which is, which is great news. And, you know, so, so the general fund did really well. Other funds that are important to the town are your landfill fund. There's about $4.1 million in that fund. That's in your landfill fund, and that's used for different purposes, but that's an important number for you folks to understand, 4.1 million. And then in your special revenue funds or your library fund, actually, you've got about 3.6 million. Now, that's, that's reserved for library, so you can't, you can't really touch that in terms of operating, other than what the library will allow you to appropriate from. So that's about 3.6 million in the library funds. Let's look at debt. So debt, the town's got 45.1 million in outstanding debt. That went up about 3 million because you did some borrowings that exceeded what you were maturing. And also included, on top of your debt, are two other liabilities that a lot of people forget about, but they're getting a lot of publicity lately, are your OPEB liability, which was 54.1 million at the end of 2019, and your pension liability, which was 30.3 million. Those are your unfunded liabilities. The pension liability is scheduled to, to be paid off. You have an annual assessment that is used to pay off that pension liability. The OPEB is optional, and the town has chosen to fund that on an annual basis, which is great news for the town. Because at the point that it needs to, you need to expedite that, you're going to already have a little bit of money set aside for OPEB. So when you folks vote for an amount to go to OPEB, it's going to a very good cause. It's, it's lowering that OPEB liability. At some point in the future, when your pension liability is fully funded, I assume the town will shift those monies towards paying down OPEB. But getting a good start now is great. It starts to earn some, some interest. It gets bigger and bigger each year. So any questions on, on just those few items? Okay. So let's move on to the next couple of things I highlighted. So, so getting to the landfill, I circled an item here that, that the landfill was actually used as a funding source for OPEB, the royalties from the landfill. So from what I understand, the landfill closed in November of 18. That revenue won't exist, so that's something that, you know, that I'm sure you guys are factoring into your management process about where to come up with funds for OPEB. So, so that's, that, that's something I wanted to highlight, at least, that the landfill has, the arrangement with the landfill has ended and will no longer be used for OPEB. That was on page eight. On page nine, I had a nice table there, and this really was for the benefit of the taxpayers. It shows that the town does not tax to its levy capacity. There is a tax savings when you got, when you folks go through and, and adopt your budget. And if you go down to that table I, I highlighted on page nine, five years' worth of levy limit versus levy and what's unused. And the average is about 3.8%. So whereas many towns in these uncertain times and, and, yeah, thank you, whoever shared that, many towns will tax right to their capacity. So they're going right to the 2.5% and getting, getting, getting all the money they can. You folks have done a nice job of, of not taxing to the capacity and also building reserves. So you've walked that fine line, which has been a really nice, nice phenomenon to have. That's, that's what I like to see. Not, not hitting the taxpayer for everything, but still managing to build, build a surplus in reserves. So again, a tax savings to the taxpayer of about 3.8% over the last five years. And so I thought that was a nice table to put in the report that, that everyone could share with their constituents. And finally, just in the overview section, the town did set its 2020 tax rate at 19.48 per, per thousand, certified by the Bureau of Accounts in December. And from what I understand, the town is working aggressively to get their next tax rate certified for 2021. I know it's been challenging with some of the unknowns at the state. You rely heavily on the state and for state aid, and that number was unknown for quite a bit. So, you know, I'm sure it's going to be a challenge this year. So any questions on those parts there? And then we can get into the management letter. Okay?
Counsel Steves, go ahead.
I just think one quick observation, it's not so much a question, is that the tax rate isn't 19.48%, it's $19.48 per thousand.
Right, right, right.
It's 19.48%, which would be, would be a deadly tax rate.
Yeah, no. Yeah, it's a typo in the report that I didn't catch. Forgive me, but it's 19.48 per thousand, per thousand.
Thank you. Counsel Adams, did you have a question?
I did. Thank you, Mr. Share. Just real quick to Tony. You, you mentioned OPEB, and I know it's been mentioned a few times about not putting money into it. How important is that for us as a town to continue to put some type of sources or funding source into that?
It, it's extremely important for a couple of reasons. Number one, you've got a lot of eyes on your report. You've got a lot of investors that have invested in your bonds that, that are reviewing the stability of the town. So S and P, which is your rating agent, agency that comes in and rates your bonds, and then those ratings go out to your investors, likes to see that nice stream of OPEB payments each year. Even if it's a small amount of money, it's something. It's showing the town's thinking about it. It's showing that there's a strategy. And like I had said, hopefully, at some point down the road, when your pension is fully funded, you can direct a larger portion of your, of your, of your budget towards OPEB. And at the end of that, you know, get the pension out of the way first, but it's very important to fund that OPEB. Each year, they, they don't want to see a fall-off there. It's, it's helped you get to that double A, double A minus, I believe it is, rating, which puts you into an elite category. You're above, you're not triple A, but you're above A. And when I first started this job several years ago, you were in the A category, even, even, maybe even less at the beginning with some of the issues the town was under. So, so you've come a long way, and I, I advise you to keep that momentum going on the OPEB.
Thank you, Tony. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Quick question, as far as the pension liability, what is the scheduled date or timeline to have that completed? Do either you or Karen know that information?
Karen, do you have that off the top of your head? I, I think it's 2032 or 2034.
Yeah, I think it's 2032.
Thank you. Counsel Steves?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One, one quick question referring to the, the OPEB, and when you mentioned the landfill extension agreement and the, the landfill funds, when you, it seemed like you were, it seemed like you were not quite saying that we shouldn't be using that for OPEB. Am I reading that correctly? And if so, what would you recommend using that fund since it won't be filled, we won't be able to add anything to it for?
I, I'm not sure what the town's long-term, maybe Karen can jump in, but I'm not sure what the town's long-term strategic position is on the landfill. I know you were using a, a portion of the royalties to, to fund OPEB, which was nice. That's, that's kind of gone away now, so to continue to use the fund for OPEB, I don't, like I said, I don't know what the overall process is, Karen. Maybe, maybe you want to fill in on some of that?
Sure, if I could. Some of the reason why we were also holding on to the funds is because of the lawsuit that we have pending with the landfill. And once that is settled, and I believe we'll take a look at that and see what the best use is, you know, whether we move it to a stabilization fund, whether we do some capital with it or whatever, you know, the council and the town decides to do.
All set, Counsel?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's jump into the management letter, which is the smaller of the two reports, about eight or nine pages, and we can jump onto page two. And I'm going to have, I'm going to go through a couple of bullet points, and I'm going to have Karen, you know, help, help the town understand where we stand. So when we were doing the audit, finishing it, that's kind of when the COVID-19 pandemic began to gain traction. So I thought it would be a good idea at that time, not really knowing much about COVID, but I knew things were going to start getting locked down. I knew the economy was going to start not doing too well. I, I put some bullets in here. So the first part of this page, we've kind of already gone over through the financial statements, so I'm going to shift down to the issues that I thought the town would be confronting, and it'd be nice to get an update from Karen, Karen, as to how you've handled these now, six months later. So, so I'm going to just read them off, and then maybe Karen can jump in. So we'll go down to about, just almost near the bottom, the six items. So number one was, will the town incur revenue deficits? Well, the fourth quarter hadn't started yet. So we were anticipating that with the lockdown, that there'd be a shortfall in revenue in the fourth quarter. So we haven't looked at it since, but that's something that, you know, hopefully Karen can address in a, in a couple of minutes. Also, the other question was, how will it affect local receipts in 2021? So, so number one, what happens in 2020? Do we have deficits? Are we going to have to raise money? Are we going to have a problem with free cash, et cetera? And then how does that roll into 2021, which is where we're at now? So now we've got a good quarter under our belt. So how are we doing economically on local receipts? Will taxes and excise see a slowdown in collection? So did the taxes come in at, at about the same level? Or was there a slowdown in taxes? I, the state allowed towns to extend the due date on the taxes. So we saw a lot of towns not collecting money till July for their taxes. So that's going to impact your free cash at the end of the year. So that was a, a question we threw out there that the town should be monitoring very closely, was how are the taxes, they going to come in like normal, or are they going to come in in July? Or are we going to have a lot of delinquencies? Number four, would there need to be a cut? The budget had not, you know, would there be, be a cut to services or, or reaching into reserves? That would be for 2021. So was the revenue situation going to be so bad that you'd have to cut teachers, police, fire, and so on and so forth, public works? Or, or reach into your reserves? Or does it seem like you can at least flat level your budget with the slight increases that you've had every year? Number five, how would it affect your annual pension? At the beginning, at this time that I was writing it, the markets were tumbling. Went from 29,000 to 30,000, the Dow down to, I think it was around 18,000. So my, what my brain was telling me is, oh my God, we're going to have a huge shortfall, a big unrealized investment gain or loss in the pension fund. How will that impact the, your assessment going forward? I think, given the market recovery, so far in the short term, we have not, we're not seeing that big, big problem. So I can kind of answer that. And then lastly, just the safety and health of the citizens. At the time, we didn't know what the town's plans were, what the lockdown protocols were, what your access to the public would be. So that was another daunting challenge for the town. So Karen, if you can. Karen, if you can uh jump in, that'd be great. Just kind of go through and see where where the town's caught with these.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'll go through some of the the um items on your list. Um, will the town incur a revenue deficit? In any of its revenue for in fiscal year twenty twenty? Well, we haven't fully closed out twenty twenty. We're still looking at the revenues and especially the expenses. But how it looks right now in fiscal twenty is that the overall shortfall, but just in revenue is um approximately two hundred thousand dollars. Now, I just want to point out a couple of things that came in over and under budget that kind of brought us to that place. So we're worried about being short in some of our taxes. So real estate did come in almost five hundred thousand dollars short to the budget amount. But what tends to offset that is that we brought in three hundred and almost fifty thousand dollars worth of tax liens redeemed. And that does not get budgeted, so that helps to offset that that deficit. Now, we did have um about fifty six thousand shortage in motor vehicle taxes. And uh those, that was one of the local receipts areas that we were concerned about. And then in the room and meals tax was another one, especially we were concerned about that fourth quarter. But actually, it only came in um twenty three thousand eight hundred short in our budget. So we did pretty, pretty decent with that as well. So I just wanted to point out also some areas um that came in rather well in order to cover some of those deficits. The um, the other charges for services, which the biggest piece is the ambulance, came in about fifty eight thousand dollars over budget. Let me just look at some of the other categories. Our licenses and permits were about twenty seven thousand over budget. Um, investment income, about forty, almost forty four thousand over budget. One area of concern, though, to keep looking at is the Medicaid. That is the amount of reimbursement that we get back that has to do special education related to the school department. And I believe some of this was timing and also because of the COVID. We were a hundred and thirty seven that were in. Um, and then I just wanted to point out too that we received almost fifty thousand dollars in a FEMA reimbursement that Heather Blakely needs to get credit for filing for that, for I believe it was one of the snowstorms. And even though we got it back after the fact, we were able to recoup that money. So there are areas that I didn't mention, but those were the most notable. That brings us to about two hundred and five thousand that were short in um in revenues for fiscal year twenty twenty. However, when looking at the expenses, um, when we put the budget freeze in place around the time of the COVID in fiscal twenty twenty, we tried to be very fiscally responsible and conservative in spending the monies. And the, because of those things that we put into place, we were able to cover the revenue deficit. And I'll save more money on the expense side. So um, we're not, we're not fully done yet. We're not done closing the school. We have a few more areas to look at with the expenses. Um, but I'm anticipating probably about a million dollars or more in savings going back from the budget side. So looking at that and then looking at the shortage in the revenue, um, hopefully it looks like we will be having some free cash, which is good news for fiscal year twenty twenty. But you know, I don't want to say exactly how much or anything for sure until everything's been put together and I'll send it into the Department of Revenue um, a little bit later in the fall to be certified. So does anybody have any questions? I know that, um, you know, the counselors were waiting for some updates on the revenue and how we did for fiscal twenty twenty.
Any questions, Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll just go back and look at the recording later on for the numbers. Uh, I couldn't keep up with uh what you were saying. But Karen, I appreciate you and your team doing all that, uh, because that's something that's been, we've been asking for since, I would say, June, July. And I know it's taking some time and it's not just uh quick books that pops up and tells you what you're shorting uh over on. So I appreciate that. And um, thank you for for working those numbers the way you guys did. So that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Steve's? Um, yeah, I don't know if you were about to get into this, but do you have any projections for the way this is gonna affect us for this coming, for the current fiscal year?
Well, I'll make a few comments on that. Um, I was looking at the the state sent out our uh chair, updated cherry sheet assessments. And actually, the assessments with the charter school and the school choice, um, the changes were positive for the town. Hopefully, it keeps keeps that way. And um, we're saving over a couple hundred thousand dollars in there. And then I looked on the revenue side and it's about a couple hundred thousand dollars um with will be the reduction in the state aid due to level funding on the chapter seventy and the um the unrestricted local aid. So it does look like, um, you know, we kind of have a decent balance there. I don't think we'll have to do any any serious cutting on it. We're just gonna have to watch as the local receipts come in. I do not have any report yet on the first quarter. Um, but once I have that, you know, I can bring that forward to the town manager and to council, so we can see how the how the numbers are coming in.
All set, counsel?
Uh, thanks.
Thank you. Any other councils? Um, Karen, I just want to say, uh, thank you for all the hard work that you and this finance team did. And um, I really do want to commend the council as well. I I think um, for the taxpayers, I I think you would agree, Karen, we, as a council, we took a pretty aggressive approach uh when the uh COVID nineteen took place and took immediate steps to uh put into place the freezes on spending and hiring. And I think uh that hard work by all the departments to work with in their means while putting a freeze on is a benefit to us to put us in, I think, a stronger position to move forward. So thank you uh for that work and on that. So I just want to say thank you on that.
Thank you. And and Mr. Chair, if I could just say one last, no, it did take a little while to get some of the numbers together. And just to let you know, you know, I'm, we're str- I'm struggling a little bit still, you know, due to the um the munis conversion to some things with payroll and some of the other areas that I'm still trying to work out. So that's why it's, you know, just taking a little bit longer to get where we want to be. But thank you. And and yes, a- absolutely, the council, um, you know, was very supportive of us with the budget freeze and being very conservative with the um with the spending.
Thank you. Uh, Tony, you want to continue?
Sure. Thanks, Karen. All right, so um, get into some um, some quick things. Um, so the next areas are, we'll talk about some informational items real quick. They're not necessarily findings, but things that I think you should be thinking about. And then we'll get into some um, uh, some, some of the findings and then some of the other things. Um, but uh, on page, I'm on page three of the management letter. So the first one is really just for myself, my team and Karen's team. It's just some updates on GASP. Uh, we don't have to spend a lot of time on that, but GASP is requiring different um different ways to handle uh student activities and other fiduciary funds and and also different, a different manner of handling leases. So we don't have to get into a boring conversation about that. I'm sure myself and Karen will have plenty of boring conversations about those two Gaspys as they um, as they become closer to implementation. But just a reminder, more for the financial team that they're out there and, you know, we've got to gather some information to um to put those together for the final report. And I think it's two thousand and twenty one is the next one and then two thousand and twenty two. So we're not gonna see it for a little bit. Um, the next one is a fairly important uh topic. It's just called, it's network security. Um, before COVID, you know, towns were just getting hit left and right, uh, ransomware, um, hacking. Um, you know, getting in and getting files, getting sensitive information. Um, every time you seem to pick up the news, someone was getting hit where, all over the country, you know, and and they wanted millions of dollars to to release the information, release your files. So uh, just thought it was a great idea to get a a security check, you know, call in a firm, uh, have them kick the tires. Are there any vulnerabilities? Um, you know, what what should you be aware of? What shouldn't you? Are your firewalls in place, things like that? Just if the audit doesn't really get into that sort of stuff, we can't bait a test or test your uh system uh in a security uh way. We can just ask questions and um, you know, it's 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 good to do that, especially now in this world where things could be getting done more remotely. So are you, are your computers that are out doing the remote processing, are those being looked at and taken care of and so on and so forth? So um, and and again, just something I wanted to throw out there is a good practice um to to get involved in. Um, and uh, I'm I'm not gonna report that I saw any vulnerabilities or anything like that, uh, especially, you know, in in a meeting. But um, you know, like I said, it would, it would be good to expand um and have uh some, something done in that area. Questions on that?
Actually, Tony, I would just chime in that um, you know, a lot of us are used to the ransomware version of the fraud. But probably one of the biggest parts of fraud that the state's dealing with right now is the uh unemployment leak that not only in Massachusetts, but a lot of other states. Um, so, you know, it's, it it was a completely different kind of, you know, electronic fraud that was taken advantage of under the situation uh that that happened. Um, I think supposedly they know what's going on with it, but it's still taking the the state a long time to figure it out. And, you know, for those towns that are self insured who get billed um by unemployment, there's a lot of false claims still coming through and there's a lot of timing issues of we are, we'll we'll refund your money, town, when it, when we figure it out, but you take some initial hits. So I I just wanted to kind of, when you, when you read in the paper and you read about the unemployment, this is kind of one of those things. While while it was the state system and not yours, people adapt to where there's weaknesses um, caused by, you know, phenomenon. And uh, you gotta be alert for it. I think it's really our uh our focus there too, is is to be ready for the next thing too.
Okay, um, so on the next page, just a couple of quick bullets. Uh, along the line of fraud, just uh fraud risk mitigation, I think the town's got a really nice process in place uh for looking at cash handling. Um, once uh during the audit, they have us go out and do a a, on a rotating basis, look at certain departments. We've got, we've, over the years, we've looked at town clerk, we've looked at um some of the school uh activities. This year, we went out and looked at airport, which we'll get into in a, in a, in a little bit. Um, and the town does its own um cross checking and reasonableness as well on the fraud risk side. But, you know, fraud is alive and well. Um, so make sure the departments that are handling a lot of cash um, I have good controls in place. And I think the town does a deep, a deep, very good job in that area. And but I always put this in as the annual, annual reminder, you know, your, your mother always tells you, you gotta brush when you get up in the morning. This is kind of the same thing. You gotta, you know, this is the uh the annual reminder, whether fraud's going on or not, I always put it in the management letter. Just, you can't talk about it enough. Um, next, uh, SEC disclosure. Uh, as the town, if the town starts uh getting a little more uh into leases, um, you gotta disclose those now. If you don't disclose those, it's, it's gonna result in a violation of an SEC compliance. You'll be, you'll, you'll have to file that you're noncompliant. So again, this is just a reminder, there was, I'm not suggesting there was any issues at the town, but just a reminder, sometimes it's, you know, you get into um I was just at a town that the school department leased three hundred laptops and didn't tell anybody at the town hall. So we discovered it during the audit and we're like, oh, my God, did you would dis- did you do a disclosure? It was like five hundred thousand dollars. And they had not done a disclosure. The town hall didn't know about it. Uh, thankfully, um, they were able to escape under an exempt clause, but that doesn't always happen. So um, so again, just a reminder to all department heads. If there's any leases or anything going on, the town hall needs to know about it, because you gotta get a hold of your bond counsel and your financial consultant so they can do the proper disclosures. I think there's a question.
Uh, there is. Thank you. Um, Mr. Roselli, just a few questions. Does that, is this applied to leases going both directions? If we're, say, for example, if we're the landlord as well as the lease, the one who's doing the leasing?
No, it's just um, the the big issue, uh, I don't know if you remember years ago, Enron and all that stuff. They, there was a lot of off balance sheet financing. So it was hidden financing that investors, shareholders couldn't see. So back then, the SEC did a bunch of things for publicly held companies. Well, governments are just starting to catch up now with all the Sarbanes Oxley and all of this sort of stuff. So it's more to say, hey, you got a half a million dollar liability out there on these laptops that we don't know about. It's not in your debt. So so it doesn't go the other way. It's just when you're financing uh something. We're with some public works equipment, uh, laptops, copiers. And those are the trivial, small ones, aren't a big deal. But once you start getting into big ones, you gotta at least um consult with your financial advisors.
Thank you.
All set. Any other questions on that? Okay.
Next, on the informational items, just a reminder, student activities uh need to get done. Um, there's a regulation. They have to be done um every three years. Um, I think myself and Karen were kind of looking high and low and it looked like the last time it was done was, I think, in two thousand and fifteen. So it's um, it's definitely uh on the um, on this, uh, it should be on the schedule to get done at some point uh in the next year or so. I know with COVID, it was something we were hoping to get to this spring, but with COVID, you couldn't get into the schools. So um, so all the student activities that we do got put on hold and then the state understands that. So nobody's gonna get in trouble or anything like that. But as soon as we're able to, we should be in there looking at student activities. And for those who don't know what student activities are, it's, it's not part of your regular government. It's, it's money that's collected for field trips, for clubs. Years ago, there was no oversight over these. So your class advisors and your, your people at the schools were, were having a field day with this stuff. And I'm not saying Southbridge, but in general, you know, you're helping themselves to slush funds and parties and and just all kinds of expenses that were not appropriate. They weren't doing the reconciliations. So the state passed these rules that you need to get these looked at once every three years. And they're not gonna force you to do it every year, because it could get expensive. But at least once every three years, go in and look at what's going on with these, those field trip money. As a parent, when I give my child five dollars to go on a field trip, I want to make sure that that five dollars got spent on the Museum of Science field trip and not on a pizza or, you know, a a teacher, a teacher's, you know, meeting or something. So so it is important to do and uh, we just put it in here as a reminder. Um, so next, uh, Chad, why don't you jump in on single audit, uh, page uh five, which is um some of the findings with the school?
Yeah, I'd be glad to. Hello, everyone. Uh, so we went through, uh, just to give you a little bit of background, the single audit is uh the special compliance audit that we perform relative to federal grant funds that the town receives. Uh, certain programs that exceed uh certain dollar thresholds. Uh, we evaluate uh on a rotating basis, usually they they move around. You you have a lot of different federal grants. Uh, in particular, this year, we looked at uh Title One, um, School Lunch and uh Twenty First Century and I believe sped. Um, so we 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 covered a lot of the major grants at the school department this year. And uh, so you're gonna see that uh pretty much all this relates to the school department. I know this coming year, we're gonna, I believe, cycle into uh the CDBG grants um, and uh not do all of the ones in uh the school department this year. So anyway, what I'll cover is uh, there were three findings that we had relative to the single audit. Uh, the first one listed there is um the uh time and effort certifications. Uh, so those are effectively employees that are paid out of grants are responsible to account for their time under the grants. Uh, this can be a, this can be accomplished through time sheets uh that they fill out and turn in. Uh, but a lot of times, in this case, the school department, a lot of the people are salaried. So they're not really necessarily filling out a uh a time sheet, because their pay is a fixed amount uh every biweekly payroll. Uh, what we found when we came in and we started asking for them was that uh the school department was not getting these certifications. Um, we, we worked pretty extensively with them um discussing uh the compliance requirement. It didn't initially seem to be something they were aware of. And so about February or March, like Tony was saying, when we were clear, clarifying this, we we kind of got this all mapped out with the school department and then everything kind of came to a grinding halt. So at this point, we were doing the June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen grants. We're now looking at March of two thousand twenty, when we're finishing this. And uh, you know, there was no real fixing it. So it ended up being a a finding as a material weakness. And that was mainly classified that way, just because it it really wasn't part of any internal control process going on at the school at the time. Um, the way that uh, what I would tell you is that um COVID is probably gonna make this pop up again for two thousand twenty. Um, I believe the school probably would have tackled it and went out and got some of the certifications uh at the end of the school year last year, but then uh, at the end of the school year last year, but then everybody went home and stayed home. So, I, just so you know, um, i- if you, if you see it next year, I think in all fairness, they really didn't have much of a chance to, uh, correct this finding. Um, but I believe they, everyone's on track now with where it needs to go in the future. The, uh, the second one here, suspension and debarment checks will not perform before entering into contracts with vendors. This is significant deficiency, uh, which, which is a step down from material weakness. And this was related to, uh, primarily, uh, the school lunch. Um, there was the understanding that, um, you use a purchasing consortium to purchase most of your food through the school lunch. Uh, no one had actually checked with the consortium to see what their policy and practice was relative to, um, when they went out and obtained vendors on behalf of their membership. So, uh, following up with this, um, our understanding is that the school lunch people there in Southbridge contacted the consortium and going forward, um, the consortium is gonna provide, uh, proof of suspension and debarment checks. So, uh, actually, this finding, uh, should actually help a lot of other surrounding communities that also use the consortium and allow them to stay in compliance. The final one here is, uh, so, uh, four years ago or so now, um, we switched over from what was, maybe some of you, if you were ever involved with grants, new single audit as O M B A one thirty-three. That got, um, basically, uh, eliminated in total and was replaced with a compliance system known as Uniform Guidance, um, that now controls what we're supposed to look at and the operation of the grants. One of the things that, uh, they came out with was that the internal control system needed to be documented in writing and particularly relative to, uh, how the operation of the grants work. And so, this kind of refers back to something Tony had mentioned earlier. Uh, after Enron and WorldCom, uh, issues, a lot of the publicly traded companies had to go through an extended document and controls. Uh, this was not a requirement of, uh, a lot of municipal entities, u- until Uniform Guidance kicked in. So, uh, this was actually a finding in the prior year's single audit report also, um, by the other auditors. Uh, they, we're, uh, rolling forward, uh, because there still wasn't a, uh, document at the time. I, I believe it's something the town is looking to, to develop and get implemented. But, um, you know, I know, as Karen had referenced, you know, between COVID and then also trying to get Munis up and running, you know, she, she, there's, there's, there's a hierarchy of things that has to get done and, you know, obviously getting people paid is at the top of that list. So, I, I'm sure this will get fixed, um, and corrected in the near future. But, there was, uh, what I'd want to point out is, uh, the prior auditor had also had a fi- a second finding besides this one that was related to the filing of final financial reports on the various school grants. And when we went in, our, our job is to look at last year's findings and find out whether corrective action has been implemented or whether it still remains an issue. And in that case, the school department had corrected that finding. So I, I wanna be fair here and, and, and just let everybody know that, um, you know, there is progress being made. Um, you know, uh, I, I think as new auditors, you know, people talk about bringing in new auditors, new sets of eyes. I think that's really where the first two bullet points kind of popped up this year is, uh, they were just things that we, we had a perspective on, uh, that, that we brought to the school's attention. Any questions about the single audit and the grants? Okay, um, so what I'll throw in here too is when you hear about all this CARES money, um, and this FEMA money, um, that is, uh, not so much necessarily an FY twenty because a, a lot of this, a lot of the grant funds hadn't been released or a lot of the spending is gonna ultimately end up happening in FY twenty-one from the looks of it. Um, so we may end up having to look at it as an FY twenty-one grant, but, uh, you know, when, when we talk about compliance and what FEMA and the various, uh, DOR and A N F require, it may be something that we're gonna be required to come in and comment on a year or two down the road. Um, so, I, I would just throw that out there, that, uh, compliance on these grants is most likely gonna be subject to, uh, review under our audit, um, just in full disclosure. Uh, the next part is just a note that we've been making, uh, unused remaining special revenue fund balances. This was actually something that we've, uh, been including for a number of years at the request of the Department of Revenue. Kinda, i- it was kind of coming out of when the economy had failed the last time and, and a lot of departments or a lot of municipals were saying, hey, I don't have money to do this, I don't have money to do that, and budgets were tight. One of the things DOR came up with was when they reviewed a lot of towns' end-of-year filings, there was an awful lot of money sitting in special revenue that nobody was using, gifts, grants, things like that. Um, and they kind of put the challenge out there to say, well, you've got this other money, maybe it's time to review it and see, uh, see what you can make of it. Last few years, when the economy improved, it hadn't seemed so important, but admittedly, as, uh, as things have kind of turned here, uh, it might be something to evaluate, you know, if budgets get a little tight in, uh, twenty-one. Uh, we would point out that there was forty-seven accounts in special revenue that didn't have any activity. Um, in, in all fairness, most of them were five thousand dollars or less, so you're not probably gonna solve a, a massive, uh, budget issue with it or anything like that. But if, you know, there's something on some department's wish list or something they need to kind of get by, you know, they might have some gift money or something sitting around that they could use. Um, so we're, we're just bringing that to people's attention, um, to, to not forget about the forgotten money, um, especially in times like these. Any, uh, anything else? Okay, um, you know, I'd like to maybe, and Karen, you can maybe correct me on the timelines a little bit, but one of the things, I know we were talking about the, uh, the revenue for taxation and how, um, you know, the, the tax liens had kind of saved the, the property tax revenue because there, there was a little more delinquency in filing or in paying taxes. One of the things that, uh, happens is, is, once that timeline comes and ends and, um, taxes have come due, the treasurer can go out and put liens towards them and send out lien notices. Uh, usually that's allowed thirty days after the tax bills are due, which would be around June first. And then it's basically, we're gonna advertise you, things like that, if you don't pay in thirty days. Uh, I, I believe that process was probably somewhat delayed this year, if, if I'm right, Karen. I mean, you, you had a new treasurer coming in, you had a new computer system going onboard. Uh, with those lien notices being delayed, that's probably one reason why the tax revenue was a little bit down. And I would, um, I, I don't wanna put Karen on the spot about how much came in, in the first sixty days or so, but I would assume that you would probably find that once those notices went out, you probably saw an uptick in, uh, in that delinquent property tax revenue collection, which is gonna be reflected in the FY twenty-one numbers. Um, because those lien notices usually get people's attention, um, and they start paying their delinquent bills. So, on a positive note, I guess I'd like to throw that out there, that there might have been a timing thing in- involved, but...
So Karen, would you like me to answer that?
Sure, thanks Melissa.
Um, so, so you're right, there isn't, there was a delay with the, um, tax title takings because we haven't done one since COVID hit and normally there would be a taking done, um, in the spring, you know, usually, uh, June, July. However, um, Southbridge has a, has had a practice for many years that we're not doing the, um, immediate fiscal years, um, tax titles, we're not doing the ones that were due in May when we do the tax title in June, we're doing the ones that are already a year old. Um, and we do that because we have up to, um, three years in order to do the tax title and we find that we can get an awful lot of collections, um, through the tax collector's office without incurring the cost of the tax title. Um, unfortunately, um, Southbridge has a pretty substantial tax title, uh, list. Um, so we are, now, now we have not done, so as this spring approaches, we will have to do two years of tax title at the same time. Um, and unfortunately, most of the tax title collection happened to, prior to COVID and then once COVID hit, um, many of our payment plans and people who are regularly paying us sort of disappeared, um, because they too, um, fina- uh, faced financial hardship. So, you know, while we'll get a response from the, um, tax title, um, lien process, I don't really believe we'll get a whole lot of payment right away unless, um, the situation in town changes dramatically. Um, cause many of our people who are always on the cusp and when we send the notice, they pay us, um, they've sort of disappeared. So, um, now that they need a few things, like a, a building permit or something, they, they come in, but unfortunately, because nothing, um, because they haven't done anything in a while and they haven't been making their payments in a while, they're very far behind. So that's sort of where we are with our, with our delinquencies.
No, thank you Melissa, I mean, I think that, I think that's an important thing to kind of be aware of, um, in, in, in that regard. So, uh, it was definitely worth a discussion point, I think, so everyone understands. But, uh, if nobody else has any more questions for me, I'll turn it back over to Tony. I think, uh, that pretty much, he did the, uh, airport review, I believe, so I'll let him.
Okay, just having trouble with my mute there. Um, yeah, so, uh, thanks Chad. Um, yeah, so this, like, like I mentioned earlier, we, Karen has, um, you know, we go through and say, hey, you know, what department do you want us to look at? Uh, go down, look at internal controls, best practices, and we spend about a day, um, asking questions, looking at some documents, uh, tracing items into the treasurer's office and to the accountant's office just to make sure everything flows, flows well. And, um, this year, we actually went down and, um, took, took a look at the airport, uh, which, which brings in, um, which brings in some money into, into the town and pays some, some expenses, though we thought it was a, a good area and, uh, the town wanted us to look at that. So basically, the, the, the town operates, um, a private airport down, um, you know, um, in town. Uh, you've got, uh, thirty, I think thirty-three users, planes that, that land. Uh, you've got a, an aviation school down there, uh, you've got a little restaurant down there. So, um, yeah, we looked at a bunch of things and we found that there, there, there could be some improvements in best practices. I, I think it's, uh, important to, to, to look at that, um, that this, when you look at something like this, it should be run like a business. And, and when you run things like a business, uh, it means you, things need to be documented, things need to flow well. And, uh, and, and we, we found that there was a lot of, um, things that weren't being communicated completely to the town hall. Um, we found that the, you know, that there's a, there's a policy where you have to have an agreement which each, with each user of the airport. And there was only twenty-two agreements, but there were thirty-three users. Some of the agreements weren't signed, some of them weren't dated, um, some of them weren't complete. So there was just a lot of, you know, through that process, there was a lot of, um, uh, paperwork inconsistencies that we saw. Uh, if, if someone stops using the airport, there should be a notice going to the, the treasurer saying, the service has been terminated. They don't, no want, no longer want to use the airport. Instead of having the, the treasurer send out a bill, uh, only to have the user say, hey, we, we don't use the airport anymore. And then it just gets into more inefficiencies for the treasurer's office. Um, also made a recommendation that you should be getting insurance, uh, with those agreements from the, um, making sure these airplanes are insured and, uh, and, and carry the proper insurance and, um... There was, uh, one of the leases, there's two leases, one's with the diner and one's with the aviation school. The aviation school is a forty-five thousand dollar lease and we found that it didn't seem like it went through the procurement process properly, uh, the thirty B. So, um, so that was one thing we found, the diner looked like it went through a proper process. So, um, so a bu- a bunch of things that, you know, if you wanted to read them, there's fourteen bullets we have here. Oh, one of the things I had written was, it may benefit the airport, make things more efficient if you go through an online registration instead of all these hand, hand agreements, kind of like when you register, you know, uh, for an athletic event or, or, or some sort of a, you know, function. And, uh, that, that could make things more efficient. Um, also, I suggested maybe a late fee because I noticed some payments were late, um, for use of the airport. Um, so, just, a- and extra spots, you know, what's the adverti- you know, maybe an advertising or a marketing program to get some of the extra spots, uh, taken, bring a little bit more money in. So, um, so like I said, I know this is, I think, over the overs, under the oversight of, uh, Airport Commission. So I'm not sure what kind of influence the town council has over the, um, over the airport, but these were just some best practices, uh, in these fourteen or fifteen comments that I thought would make the process better. And it's really not a lot of extra work to, to complete these, uh, practices. Um, any questions on, um, on the airport?
Counsel, Counsel Steve?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, I noticed that Richard Clements is on the, on this call, so would it be possible to have him answer some of those concerns that Mr. Roselli just brought up? Can you answer those, Rich? Rick?
Are you there?
He's logged on. All right, Rick.
I wish, I took a look at some of the issues here, um, again, these were, this is for the fiscal twenty nineteen. And we, um, the airport ha- had some issues with, uh, a process, you know, getting our process between us and the, and the accounting office and then with the new software issues. So, uh, back in May, uh, with a Zoom call, we put together a new rental agreement. The new rental agreement is out there. I think we've gotten them all back at this time. It does have a late fee for, for both tie-downs and for hangers, so that's built into the new, the new rental agreement. So, I think there's still more work to be done. I think once, you know, the COVID gets past, we can spend some time with the town, uh, treasurer and accounting office and try to, you know, make this process more robust. So as people change in and out of the Airport, Airport Commission and people change inside of the accounting office, there'll be a process in place that people can easily follow because we have, we have had a lot of confusion and I think we need to work on this still.
All set, guys?
For the moment, thanks.
Yeah, it's, um, yeah, one of the things I, I'd like to mention, which I, I believe Chad mentioned, is the timing of the management letter was, was March, right when all the lockdowns happened, right when everything was going on. So, it would, it was gonna be very hard for the town to address these things right away just because of the inefficiencies of being in a lockdown and having to, uh, do everything remote. So I wouldn't have expected the airport to jump all over this right away. It's nice to hear that there's being some discussion and some improvements in the process. Karen had mentioned that they, uh, they have gotten, uh, better at, uh, communicating and that they, through this report, they do understand that, um, you know, that, that there are some things that needed to be done down there. Uh, getting full closure on these observations is probably gonna take a little bit. Um, some of these things may exist for the next, uh, six months or so until, uh, some of the COVID, um, you know, clears out and, uh, people can actually sit at a table and start drawing some good plans up. So, um, so that's, um, just wanted to add that. Uh, but I think that concludes the, the report. And I'll throw it out for any general questions on anything we've discussed today or anything else, um, you know, in a, a kind of a free forum here, if you wanna, um, jump in and ask any questions while you're having myself and Chad on the line.
Any counselors have any questions? Counsel Ryan, you all set?
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Oh, Counsel McCready, go ahead.
So, well, while you're talking about the airport, I'd like to point out that they do, they also have a solar park up there, which they do receive, uh, money for, goes into the airport funds. It wasn't mentioned in your report, I don't know if, uh, it's there, but I'm not seeing it. It, maybe it's not specifically, but, uh, and I know this isn't, this isn't for you to... It maybe it's not specifically, but, uh, and I know this isn't, this isn't for you to, to answer, but. Is, uh, maybe Karen or the town manager, are you going to, to, uh, take another look at the airport and. And straighten some of these problems out? That would be my question. I mean, cause I've, I've heard this before. I thought, I thought for some reason I've heard the same thing. Some time ago about the airport and I don't know if it was during budget hearings or was it last year? I don't recall, but I, I just recall, remember, I remember hearing this same thing. Quite a while ago about the, uh, operations at the airport. So that's, that's the only thing. I, I, I think this is a pretty good audit. I, you know. I don't have any problem with the audit. I just, I'm concerned that, you know, that if they're pointing out a problem here that we look into it and, and try to. To resolve it. The other thing is those forty-seven accounts, I think that's quite high and. I think we should, uh, you know, take a look at that. That could be a couple hundred thousand dollars. That's nothing to. You know, that's nothing to sneeze at. That's a lot of money. So let's get a handle on that as well. We gotta put it into stabilization or free cash. I think that's what we should do with it. But that's all. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you very much for your audit.
Thank you, Counsel McCready. Counsel Steve's?
Um, yeah, just to follow up on what Counsel McCready just said, um, I think we, you might be remembering the fact, I think we discussed this, this discuss this agenda back in the spring. Um, although the, the auditors weren't there, um, but I think Karen was. Um, and as far as those, some of those forty-seven accounts, did, didn't we take some of those forty-seven accounts? And throw them into stabilization? Were some of those accounts, some of the old capital accounts that we clarified a couple of months back? Karen?
Those are the ones that they're referring to because I did tell them that we did do a review of the capital projects and close them. There's a lot of small balances. School and town that we just have to look through. And I, I did a little bit in the past and I told people, you know, look through them. Either we're gonna keep them there or close them, but I, I'll do it again just to make sure that we. Have a thorough review of them.
Okay, thank you very much. And also just to update, uh, for, to follow up on what, uh, what, what Mr. Roselli, I think, or Mr. Clark was saying about. The, um, the flight school doesn't exist up there anymore. Um, just for people who might be watching, as I recall, we had issued that months ago, um, and they're gone.
The flight school is still there, Counsel. The flight school is still there.
Wait, what, and it gone? One of them disappeared, didn't they?
The first.
One, the first one. The second one is there.
Oh, this is the second, okay. I think it's, good, thanks.
Any other questions, comments?
Uh, just with respect to those forty-seven accounts, um, it's more of an investigative process. Some of those you can't just put into free cash. Um, some of those were given to the town for a specific purpose. The person who was overseeing those monies may have retired. Another person takes over, doesn't know about them and they kind of just languish. So it's more identifying them. Um, seeing if they were for a specific purpose, talk to the department heads, see if the department heads can spend them. The ones that are kind of abandoned, where nobody knows what they were for, you could have got them in nineteen eighty-two. And they're still on the books. I had, um, the, um, I had a city that, that had this trust fund. Four hundred and twelve dollars rolling forward every year with no activity in it. And one year they cleaned out their entire archives and they got records from nineteen thirty-eight. And that four hundred and eighteen dollars was there in nineteen thirty-eight. And I said, I said, let's just leave it there for prosperity's sakes. Let's not write that one off. Let's let that one carry forward. And no one knew what it was. But it was amazing to see that it was in the records, these yellow paper, old records. Like eighty, ninety years ago and it was still on the ledger without having any activity at all. Um, so, um, so yeah, you can't, like I said, you can't just close them out unless they, if they're abandoned and they're small, you can make a de minimis cleanup entry. To, to close them out. The D O R is not gonna have a problem with that. Um, but for the most part, you try to identify them and, and, and spend them for their purpose.
Thank you. Anything further? Any other comments? All right. Thank you very much. Look forward to, uh, next year's audit and, uh, make sure we take care of some of the stuff that's been outstanding. So, thank you.
Thank, thank you for having us and, um, we'll see everyone. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tony and Chad.
Thank you. Moving on to citizens forum, is there anyone out in the. Uh, that has called in that wishes to address the South Beach Town Council on anything not on the agenda this evening? Anyone? Last call? See, now we'll move on. Item ten, vote to confirm the appointment of Derek Julian to the Protection of Persons and Property Subcommittee effective immediately through July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. Or until another member is appointed to the state ethics training is in good standing. Do I have a motion? A motion and a second, a discussion? I'm just gonna mute that person because I guess call it five. Okay, um, Derek had previously served on the PPP and put in his name on this. I had put this forward on the agenda as Council Lazlo was not gonna have a meeting for a while. And that appointment had been sitting in the town manager's office. I did speak to Counsel Lazlo and he was okay with it being put on the agenda. So that's why it's here. Any further discussion? See none, roll call?
Counsel Adams?
Yes, one question please.
Yeah, go ahead.
Actually, Mr. Chair, uh, he's going on, uh. Uh, the board and he wished to be a past police auxiliary officer?
He was in the past, yes. I have no idea. Um, the chief is on, I, I. I know it's been as long as I've been around, uh, on this, but Chief Whitson, do you know?
Yeah, Jack, if I, uh, Mr. Chairman, through you, uh, to Counsel Dow, I believe it was oh seven, oh eight was the last time he was on auxiliary. Sometime prior to, um. I definitely wasn't the chief. I believe I was a lieutenant. So it was either oh eight, oh seven, oh eight, oh nine, one of those years. I'm sorry. I don't have the exact date.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call?
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Catrana?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Marketti?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
Yeah.
And Counsel Steve's?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item eleven, I, I know, uh, I do know there's one more position open. I did get an email today that an individual has put in a name for that. So. We'll get that forwarded to, uh, Counsel Lazlo for filling the second spot on that subcommittee. Um, item eleven, vote to accept the warrant for the town election on Tuesday, November third, two thousand twenty. And authorize the town clerk, Madeline Bonadieus, to sign the warrant on behalf of the South Beach Town Councils due to existing COVID-nineteen restrictions. Do I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Ryan, second by Counsel Steve's. Any questions, comments on this? This is just a warrant for the national election. And ballot questions. No discussion? Roll call?
Counsel Catrana?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Marketti?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
Yeah.
Counsel Steve's?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Motion carries. I'm.
Mr. Chair. Just on this, I may not, I may not hurt you. Are these signatures? Do we need to go in and sign these or do you just sign them?
No, it's authorized, just Matty Bonadieus. It's in the agenda item, authorize Matty to sign the warrant.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Hey, no, no, mine. Apologize. Thank you.
No problem, Counsel. Item twelve, vote to approve a transfer of eleven thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars from account number zero, zero, one, one, five, one. That five, three, zero, 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 legal town attorney specialized services. To account number zero, zero, one, one, two, three, dot five, one, one. Zero, 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 town manager salaries, four thousand twenty-five dollars. Account number zero, zero, one, one, two, three, dot five, one, nine, seven, zero, zero, car allowance, four thousand eight hundred ninety dollars. And account number zero, zero, one, one, two, three, dot five, seven, zero, 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 town manager, other expenses. Twenty-five hundred dollars to cover town manager's contract obligations for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Is there a motion? I go a motion by Counsel Steve's, second by Counsel Catrana. Any questions?
Um, that was, that came to our subcommittee, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we approved it four to zero to recommend doing it. Um, it's really a formality in terms of, um, the fact that Karen had taken a look at. The amount of money that was left over in the town manager's account after Ron left. And just needed to, to make it square with what we had made with the agreements that we had made with, with manager McColl.
Any other questions? Counsel Dow, did you have something? I don't know if I saw your hand. No? Any other counselors? See none, roll call?
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Marketti?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
Yeah.
Counsel Steve's?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
And Counsel Catrana?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item thirteen, vote to ratify change order number one in the amount of six thousand one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and sixty-eight cents. From Dependable Service Company Incorporated for additional work to a self-referent airport fuel farm project. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Adam, second by Counsel Dow. Uh, Mr. Town Manager, do you wanna take this one first or is it gonna go to Mr. Clements?
We can probably defer to Mr. Clements. He met with me last Friday and we went over this, um, and I did not see any issue with. Based on what he explained to me, but I'll let him explain it to Counsel in detail.
All right, Counsel Steve's, does this come to your subcommittee as well for a recommendation?
Um, no, Mr. Chairman, we decided we sent it directly to the council because of, because of the way it affected there had been posted, timing.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Clements, welcome.
Thank you. Uh, just a little backup history, uh, the town voted, uh, the council voted for the fuel farm project back in. February tenth of this year for seventy-six thousand dollars. Um, the, the contractor actually came in and listened to that. Uh, this fee for the sixty-one hundred dollars is for two things that change orders that were, were put out, were put to, to the town from the, uh. The dependable, the well decom- decommissioning, the well was deeper than what was estimated. So therefore there was an extra cost on the decommission of the well. At the airport. And the airport commission asked for a specific hose reel that coils up. It's a single hose reel, it coils up and. It doesn't bind up and it's a lot easier for the. Farm. So the total of this, uh, these change orders were six thousand one twenty-eight, sixty-eight. Of that, the town is, is responsible for four hundred and ninety dollars and twenty-nine cents. So out of this, the, 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 the only cost to the town will be four hundred and ninety dollars and twenty-nine cents. But the way the contracts read, we have to bill it, hey, we have to pay for it, then we bill back to the state with a, the refund on that portion. And this will close out the, uh, fuel farm project. This is the last payment for the contractor.
Questions? So was this the only change order, Mr. Clements?
Yes, this is the only change order.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Counsel Marketti?
Well, my, my question is about the, uh, airport well. Um, according to the paperwork here, the contractor assumed that it was three hundred feet. He found out it was six hundred feet. Who told the contractor that it was three hundred feet? Was it in the bid document? Who told him that?
It's in the bid documents that went out with, uh, when we, when it first went out. So they. Put in their bid that they, they, they have a bid for three hundred feet and then there's an additional fee for going beyond that.
Okay, but who decided it was three hundred feet? I mean, I, I've known since two thousand sixteen it was six hundred feet. The well, I mean, it was in, it's in the D E P report. When we went over the water lines, it's six hundred feet. I don't know. Who, who's the one, who told the contractor? Or put it in the bid document that the well was three hundred feet?
They went over the bid, bid documents that Stan Tech Engineering put together at the beginning of this project.
Oh, Stan Tech put it. All right, let Stan Tech pay for it then. Thank you.
All right, Counsel Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, to you. So technically it's not causing the town all this money, only four hundred dollars. We're gonna get the money back from the state, correct?
That's correct. The, the total project cost for the whole project was six hundred and thirteen thousand four hundred dollars. Um, and where the town, again, we pay our portion of the total project was fifty-five thousand, six, ten, twenty-nine. After we paid this change order.
Uh, thank you. I have no. Thank you. Counsel Catrana?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the town manager or to Mr. Clements. Has this work been completed?
Uh, yes, this is, this work has all been completed and the, the job is this, is the final payment and with the final payment is this change order. So it's been.
Okay, I'm gonna continue. Um, this is still money, taxpayer money. Regardless of how we look at it, may not be local. Um. But. Did, was this, was the hose reel, was it forgotten about originally?
No, there, there was a hose reel that was in the original, uh, project that was put in, uh. And through, uh, through some of the commission members and some other people we talked to. They wanted to see if we could change the hose reel to a, a different style. It coils up, it's, it's a sixty-foot hose. And so this hose reel is a single width hose, so it's, it's probably about four feet tall, the hose reel. And it can, you know, recoil without binding up. And, uh, for the, for the pilots that use it and, you know, for the safety and. And not having people, you know, damage the equipment, we thought this would be a better opportunity to, to get this, this hose reel. And so therefore the extra cost.
Okay, thank you. So. Work, work was completed. This never went through subcommittee, never went through council. For approval prior to the work being done. Is that correct?
As far as what the, which, which part are you talking about? This is all part of the, this all, you know, the, the, uh, the well and everything is in the, the original contract. That, that gets approved. Again, there's contingency fees that were built into the, the contract for any contingencies. We had a big contingency fee built into the contract. If they pulled the old fuel tank and the old fuel tank was leaking, the town was responsible for the cleanup of that, that any kind of spill. There was, luckily, there was no spill. The tank was still tight. So there was no cost spent there. And so this is, uh, out of this contract, this is the, uh, some overage that was in the, in the contract.
So was there a contingency for the hose and a contingency for the well?
No, there isn't. There's a contingency for the whole project. There's not a specific one for each, each item.
The point I'm trying to make is Stan Tech. Once again, and it seems like we've had. Issues with, I say, my opinion is there's been issues with Stan Tech before. And I, I couldn't agree with Counsel Marketti more. Let Stan Tech pay for this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank, uh, quite, question I have, uh, Mr. Clement. Um, so I, I mean, I can see the well issue. I mean, I think maybe a little more due diligence on their part. Should have found that information. If it was there, I don't doubt Counsel Marketti that they should have put in the bid document, uh, for that depth. So. I don't know what happened there. As far as the hose reel, I mean, I'm looking at that, projects change, better technology. If it's the safety of the pilots, uh, and the safety of our facility. Then I, I, I'm all for changing a reel because sometimes we, we see things that are, are different that we wanna put in place. The, uh, question that I have overall, you stated that we had a large contingency on this. Did this project still come in? Under budget than what the budget was that we had budgeted for this project?
Yes, it has.
So we're under budget, we're working within the contingencies. So the amount of money that we authorized to spend on this. We ended up spending less money and the project's complete with one change order. I mean, I, I don't find that unreasonable outside of the six hundred foot depth of the well. Um, I, one, one change order on that type of project is still coming under budget. Um. I, I, I'd be happy that that's a great project that's done up there. Uh, it's well done and, and it's for the safety and the future of the airport. Counsel Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, to you. I think when, uh, drilling the well, I don't think they have enough time to stop the machine and the whole project to come back, ask for another two hundred feet. Because they already is working on it and they have to go deeper to find, you know, what they're looking for. So I, I don't see a big deal either when they're drilling the wall, uh. The well to go another three hundred feet to get what they're looking for in the beginning. And, uh, I, I don't see, like you say, uh, under budget, uh, get the job done the right way. Uh, no Mickey Mouse, safe for everybody. I, I, I think it, it's good. I know probably different projects supposed to come, uh, be fun of us for approval, but sometimes like a project like this, I think they don't have a choice except finish the project and still under budget to come be fun of us and, uh, finish, uh, what, uh, to prove the, you know, the money or the balance. So thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Katrona, you have some follow-up?
Just a quick follow-up, Mister Chairman, as to why this didn't go before subcommittee, before coming to council?
Uh, I believe Counsel Steve says asked to have it put directly up because of the timing on it, the project's done and the bill has to be paid. One way or another.
It actually was more because it, because Gen Gov's agenda had already been set and that um, Ivan had mentioned that it was already set and I didn't, honestly, I thought it would be, would be more constructive to have it go up here, partially because open meeting laws.
Thank you, Counsel. Uh, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call?
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti?
No.
Counsel Ryan?
Yeah.
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Katrona?
No.
And Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Motion carries with Councillors Marquetti and Katrona. And the negative. Item fourteen. Vote to amend section six dash two oh one dot one, licenses and fees. Paragraph four in section six dash two zero one dot one one. Nuisance and dangerous dog hair, it's paragraph one to the keeping of the pets by law. Hold three readings as recommended. There are no other changes to the bylaw. This is the first reading of the change. I'm going to put up on the screen the actual changes. And six dash two hundred, keeping of pets. And six dash two zero one dot one, licensing fees in paragraph four. New residents bringing dogs six months or older in the town of Southbridge shall purchase the town clerk in sixty days. No license fee or any pot there shall be refunded because of subsequent death, loss, spain or removal from the town of Southbridge. Licensing period shall begin January first through March thirty-first of each year. All dog licenses expire March thirty-first of the next calendar year. Dog owners who renew the dog tags after March thirty-first or after thirty days from the date of rabies vaccination or after thirty days from the date of return to the age of six months shall pay a penalty of ten dollars. As can be seen, what was stricken out in the red was the, the grace period. Six dash two zero one dot one one nuisance and dangerous dog hair, it's in paragraph one. Any person may make a complaint to the town council chairman of the town Southbridge that any dog owned or kept within the town Southbridge is a nuisance dog or dangerous dog. As those terms are defined in Mass General Act chapter one forty, section one fifty-seven. The town council shall investigate or cause to be investigated such complaint, including examination under oath of the complaint at a public hearing, which the municipality could determine whether the dog is a nuisance dog or a dangerous dog. It shall make such order concerning the restraint and disposal of such dogs provided for in Mass General Act chapter one forty, section one forty-seven, one fifty-seven. One dangerous dog hair is requested by any police officer of the town of Southbridge or any animal control officer. The dog in question shall be subject to state empowerment at local shelter at the owner's or guardian's expense pending compliance with this section or loss of ownership of the dog for public safety reasoning. As can be seen, the term chairman in red has been stricken from that proposal. This is the first reading. October fifth, two thousand and twenty. Are there any questions, comments or concerns? Seeing none? Move on to agenda fifteen. Vote to refer back to the planning board. The amendments to Southbridge zoning bylaws add in section nine dot three, American optical flex overlay zone to receive public comment at a future joint public hearing with the town council. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Uh, good, Counsel Steve and Counsel Dow with a second. Counsel Adams, do you have something?
Yeah, I just, uh, this was on the twenty-nine September's PND subcommittee meeting. Um, it was voted to recommend four to zero unanimous. Go ahead right now.
Okay, any other comments? Town manager, you have anything to add?
Um, no, I don't know if, uh, town planner Eric is on the line. But this type of overlay is consistent with one I worked in a previous community that addresses essentially the live, work, play model, which can be a benefit to a community like Southbridge. It allows to, uh, breed new life sometimes into some buildings that otherwise wouldn't, uh, be attractive at this time, especially, uh, in the COVID, but where people are looking to move out of urban areas, you can, um, re purpose, uh, certain structures, it could be beneficial, beneficial to the community in the long run.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Eric.
Okay, um, so I just would like to give you all uh, just a, a quick overview of the process that needs to happen, uh, to be compliant with state law, if that's all right?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, so in order to be in compliance with state law, the planning board needs to hold a public hearing. And the town council also needs to hold a public hearing, uh, on these bylaws. And so we did that, uh, with the sign bylaw and the adult use marijuana bylaw. Um, we did a joint public hearing for both of those items. And, uh, I believe that the planning board would like to do a joint public hearing again. Uh, I believe that would save us, you know, time and, uh, effort and things and, and having all of us get together and just do that at, uh, one time. You know, I, I don't know if you all are amenable to that or not.
That's, uh, that's fine with me. I, I think that process went well the last time. Um, I think given the uh, remote participation, it might be a little bit easy to moderate that meeting because it was kind of difficult in the big room, but, uh, different configuration maybe. Uh, but, uh, I, I'm not opposed to that. We can set that up.
Perfect. That sounds great. Um, it did you want to go over the bylaw at all at this time or, or wait until the public hearing?
I think we're going to refer it back for the public hearing, uh, unless any other councils have any other information that they want. Counsel Adams?
So thank you, Mister Chair, just to throw it out there. I know we discussed this at the plan development. This, I think we need to go right to the public hearing. Once we set a date, I agree that it needs to be joint, uh, with, um, the town council and the planning board itself and, uh, good discussion was had, uh, but, uh, I think you go to the public for their, their input and our input as well. And, um, that's my recommendation at this time.
Yeah, I, I, I would concur. I would just ask that, uh, Eric, if you can do the best that, uh, you could to make sure that we push this information out uh, on a variety of social media and town website to make people aware of the fact that this information is out and, um, we set the meeting in such a way that maybe three weeks or so to give time for that would be my thought, unless the planning board has something else. But I'd like opportunity for people to at least know what's out here on the, on this overlay district as well as the other overlay district. So that they have a time to ask questions throughout your department or any planning board. Um, but any other thoughts on that? From counselors or Eric?
I, I agree. Um, I will put them up on the, uh, on the planning boards, uh, portion of the website tomorrow morning or even this evening. And, um, you know, we'll get the word out as best we can.
Okay, thank you. I, I just want to make sure that we get information out there so that we've done our due diligence to let people know that it's out there. Um, so that we can have, one, a robust, robust conversation about these districts. Um, and that people don't come back and say we had no idea what was going on. I'll go Counsel Steves and then Counsel Dow. Counsel Steve?
Thank you, Mister Chairman. I'm going to also suggest that we throw it out on the various Facebook pages. I know we can't have a discussion on those and we shouldn't. But to direct them to come to the public hearing, we may have a million people in this public hearing, that'd be okay, good. You know, I'd have no problem with that. It's always going to happen, but um, and also I just wanted to mention that I'm assuming that we will be doing the, um, the table of use um, changes to, at that same public hearing, so don't forget to mention them too. Is that the plan to do them all together, Eric?
Uh, that's what I would, I would propose and that's what I would like to do if that's amenable to, uh, the town council.
Makes sense to me, yeah.
Yep. Okay. Uh, Counsel Dow?
Thank you, Mister Chair. Uh, he mentioned he's going to post it only on the planning board, uh, website. It should be on a town two website as a general. Or the same thing, I'm, I'm not sure.
Uh, yeah, the planning board is part of the town website, but we'll make sure we push it to the front page as well. So we'll have to make sure it's coordinated with the town manager's office to make sure that it's, uh, prominent, uh, and gets a banner so that uh, however we can do it to get that information pushed out, but we'll make sure it's on the front page as well as the planning board, because I, I don't want to have it buried that somebody has to really go seek for it because there's some things that you have to go really looking for. But we'll put it on the front, uh, front page, uh, to make sure that's prominent. That would be my intent, okay? Okay.
Uh, Chairman, uh, could I just, uh, say just a, a, a quick, um, thing here? I just want to mention that this is Rosemary Scrivens. Um, the genesis of this overlay district, you know, of, of the planning board even looking at it was, um, the reuse of the mill buildings because Chip Norton, as you know, the principal of Franklin Realty, who owns that campus, um, has, um, plans to redevelop, um, two mill buildings for housing. Um, so as it sits right now, that would not be allowed even by special permit. Um, and that's true of other mill buildings, you know, there's a mill building on Mill Street where I, you know, been talking to a potential developer who would like to, um, redevelop it into housing upstairs and retail on the first floor. And that's what you're seeing all over. These old mill buildings, the only way they get redeveloped is if the zoning works and they can put things in there other than manufacturing, because manufacturers today wouldn't want to use that kind of space for the most part. So that was kind of the genesis of it to provide that kind of flexibility. So that all these, these old audio light uh, mill buildings actually get to be used. That, that was the genesis.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, roll call?
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
Yeah.
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Katrona?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
And Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Okay, look forward to that. Item sixteen, vote to refer back to the planning board, the amendments to Southbridge zoning bylaws add in section nine dot four, globe village flex overlay zone for receive public comment at a future public hearing with the town council. Is there a motion?
So moved.
The second. Uh, motion by Counsel Adam, second by Counsel Ryan. Counsel Adams, do you have anything different to add to this one?
No, uh, pretty much everything was the same, recommended four to zero at the twenty-nine September PND meeting. Uh, a lot of the language within this overlay, globe village overlay is the same as the American optical. Uh, with some changes here and there and, uh, I recommend it goes to, um, again, the planning board and town council, uh, public hearing, just as we're done with the American optical overlay.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, Joe, again, just sort of public, so there'll be two overlay districts. Um, your opportunity to provide impact, um, input on these. So look forward to that information. Seeing no other questions? Roll call?
Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
Yeah.
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Katrona?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
And Counsel Jovan?
Yes. Item seventeen, vote to refer back to the planning board, the amendments to Southbridge zoning bylaws, section four. Use regulations including table one. Table of users to receive public input at a future public hearing with town council. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Uh, okay, I'm going to go, uh, move by Counsel Adam, second by Counsel Daniel. Any discussion on this one? Seeing none, roll call?
Counsel Ryan?
Yeah.
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Katrona?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
And Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, we'll set that up for a few weeks out. Uh, item eighteen. Vote to ratify amendment number two of the Department of Housing and Community Development, DHCD, Community Block Grant, CDBG. Fiscal year two thousand nineteen agreement with the town Southbridge to extend the contract end date from December thirty-first, twenty twenty to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one and authorize the town manager to sign the contract to extend. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, Counsel Ryan moved it, Counsel Daniel second, Counsel Adams, this is through your subcommittee, but?
It, it was, thank you, Mister Chair. Um, it was voted four to zero, uh, to recommend to, uh, bring up here. Uh, this is just an extension on FY nineteen, CDBG funds. Uh, where the majority, about five hundred and ninety thousand dollars of this, these funds will be going to support the Main Street project through DPW. Um, this will take us at, as the agenda stated from December thirty-first, twenty twenty and extend us out, requesting to the state to, uh, extend it out to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. We've been talking about this for, uh, I'd say almost a month now, just to make sure we're we're, uh, uh, doing everything we possibly can to make sure this, uh, project moves forward and expedited, man. That's all we have.
Thank you. Mister Town Manager, anything to add? No? Okay. All right, any other questions from anybody? Okay, seeing none, roll call?
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Katrona?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
And Counsel Ryan?
Yeah.
Okay, motion carries. Item nineteen, vote to authorize town managers to sign the contract with Energy Conservation Incorporated, ECI, in the amount of ninety-six thousand nine hundred and four dollars and seventy-six cents to replace the current pneumatic zone controls for the town hall heating system. New electronic DDC controls included in six new zones to be controlled by online interface. This project to be funded by the Mass Department of Energy Resources through the Green Community Program. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay. Motion is second and to Disco Counsel Steves?
Yeah, that went through my committee. Um, we approved it four to zero. Um, just a quick summary is that, that we, that, uh, when going through the project of replacing the original, uh, we, to put in the gas project, they found that the pneumatic zone controls that they were originally proposing didn't fit the new system. So, um, they managed, had to get some new ones. I mean, however, this money is, or has already been approved as an aspect of the Green Communities grant that we got, what, about two years ago? Um, so although the, the, the ninety-six thousand nine oh four seventy-six is slightly higher than the original fund that was going to be set aside for this, it's still within the grant money, so it's not costing us anything.
Excuse me. Okay. Uh, Heather, you have anything else to add? No?
I'm, I'm here to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Oh, excuse me. Okay, Counsel Dow?
Thank you, Mister Chair. So those controller, uh, they're going to be, uh, installed. Is, is any way in the future it's going to be work same for the cooling system too? Like the AC as well, or we have to, you know, change them in the future or that system will work on the heat and in the future, hopefully down the road, we've got some money to put an AC in the building that will work same controller. Thank you.
They, they should work, um, these are electronic controllers. They they should work. Um, these are electronic controllers, so um. We should we should be able to program them to work for both systems, depending on what they recommend for the installation on the. Um, cooling system.
Thank you. All set?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Counselor Katrona? Good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the town manager. Um, I don't see a contract. In front of me. I see a proposal. Um, but normally when you see a contract. You see a completion date. Penalties for not completing a job on time. I don't see any of the protections here for the town. Um, can can you tell me where the contract is? Am I missing it? Was it just not in my packet?
All right, you're muted, Mr. Town Manager.
Sorry about that, I forgot. Mr. Chairman, um through you to Counselor Katrona, um this was presented to me. By Economic Development, Rosemary Scrivens came up um and um Miss Blakely. The materials were submitted to my office for the packet and they were placed in. I did not realize that the the contract was not in there. I don't know if that would be an impediment to this getting passed, but I could ensure that that is emailed out and I'm. I apologize for that not being included. Um, I I did see the memorandum that came through and I did. Go through and talk to um Ms. Scrivens about this and I'm satisfied with the information that she provided me, but if it's an issue. Um, Mr. Chairman, I can either ensure that's emailed right away. Um, you know, unless the council wants to postpone till they get it.
For myself personally, if we're approving a contract, I I I think we should see it. Um, I I it's difficult to approve something again when we don't know the protections. I I respect what you're saying, Mr. Town Manager, and I thank you. But like I said, when I see a contract, I look for the protections for the town. Uh, the penalties, what's the completion date? Um, are they gonna be held accountable? Where's the oversight coming from for the project? So, yes, I would like to see the contract. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Anything else?
Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Steve's moves to postpone. Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Okay. Okay. Con- uh motion to postpone. Counselor Dow, you have a quite uh question on a motion to postpone.
Question. We when when uh we postponed it, can we make sure how that that system will work in the future AC? You know, or that will take longer. I'm not sure, but can we make sure that controller will will be working with us, you know, now? Uh, we don't want to just guess, please.
No, I I I understand what you're saying, but the um the controllers. We can't put something in for AC because the AC isn't part of the Green Communities program. So I can ask the question, but we do need these controllers. For our heating system right now because we have very minimal control on our heat at all. Um, so we are getting into the heating system season. I'm a little concerned with postponing this even two weeks. Um, we need to get that heat on in that building within probably, you know, it before the end of the month. And it would be nice to have them already working on that system if if at all possible. I understand the concerns of not having a contract. This is the same exact document that we signed last time when they put in the um boiler system.
Okay, no, I understand you can't put them in the, you know, the the contra, but I I think that you can search the what kind of.
Yeah, I will ask.
All that and you know, the least kind of idea, you know, like this in the future, it'd be easy on us to move forward if we have to install. You know, we don't need to uh control it if we can. Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. So there was a motion to postpone. Any further discussion on the motion to postpone? This will be postponed till October nineteenth. And that roll call?
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Katrona?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yeah.
And Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Okay, take that up on October nineteenth. Counselors forum, style counsel Ryan?
I have nothing this evening, Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Katrona?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Steve's?
Uh, make it three for three. I don't have anything either.
Uh, okay, Counselor Marquetti?
Uh, yeah, I would I would like to uh talk about the email that I had between. Me and the town manager and the police chief recently. About the three uh police officers who recently resigned. Now, you know, I wasn't I wasn't trying to. Uh, do any exit interview. I wasn't uh. Trying to uh get anybody into trouble. But, you know, the town manager said that, you know, these things can't be disclosed publicly. But I did want to point out that, you know, the town council, we are the principal. Appointing authority in town and and I do feel that we have a right to ask questions. When um something like this happened. I mean, these are three police officers that resigned in a short period of time and I. I just became concerned, that's all. Like I said, I wasn't trying to make a big deal out of it. Uh, then I received a uh email from. Uh Chief Woodson that, you know, saying that in the first time in eleven years of his. Police administrator career, he's never seen a town councilor. Wanting to do an exit interview. I wasn't asking to do an exit interview. I was actually going through the town manager as it is in our home rule charter. Uh, but I I would like to point out in our home rule charter, it does say that town councils. Uh, do have a right to seek information. Uh, ask questions, conduct conversations with the municipal employees. And I just want to make that clear. I'm not. Not trying to go around anybody or go on anybody's head, but I I did want to know. I became concerned about three police officers resigning in such a short period of time. I'm still concerned about it. I want to make sure there's. There's no morale problem at the police department. And I would still like to know what's uh what what's going on with that. So if the town manager would, you know, look into it a little bit further and get back to me, that's fine. If the if the police officers. Don't want to talk to me, that's fine too. The Shane Woodson or Police Chief Woodson offered to let us talk to them. I took him up on his offer and now he doesn't sound. It sounds like he doesn't want me to talk to him and and I don't have to talk to him. I did. I did try to go through the uh manager and that's fine with me. But I just became concerned and I want to know. I think all councils should be concerned. Uh, and it is in our charter that we do have a right to talk to employees. Uh, but that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Dow?
No, thank you.
Counselor Adams?
All set, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Daniel?
Thank you. I'm all set too. So we move on to the next meeting, which is regularly scheduled for Monday, October nineteenth, twenty twenty.
Thank you. Ed Turner, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, second.
Motion, motion is second, roll call?
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Katrona?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yeah.
And Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Thank you and have a good evening.